The joint meeting of the Provo City Municipal Council and the Water, sorry, Metropolitan Water District of Provo Board. It is 12:37 on Tuesday, May 28, 2019, and we are gathered in the city center conference room at 351 West Center Street, Provo, Utah. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City YouTube channel where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects as well as side conversations. We will begin with a roll call. Mr. Strachan.
Cliff Strachan.
Ryan Jones.
Robert West.
Richard Rinnhold.
David Hardy.
Dave Sewell.
David Heller.
Bruce Schruck.
Dennis Ware.
Sidney Gitchin.
Dan Johnson.
Gary Winterkamp.
Lance Parker.
Isaac Axman.
All right. Though this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those seated at the council table may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. And we will jump right in to item number one, which is a presentation and review of aquifer storage and recovery. This will be presented by Mr. David Decker. Ah ha, yes, Director of Public Works. I apologize. Before we jump into item one, thank you, we would like to have an opening prayer that will be provided by Mr. Dan Johnson, the Metropolitan Water District Manager.
My Father Heavenly, thank thee for our many blessings. We're grateful, Father, at this time of year, particularly as we've had the opportunity this weekend to honor those that have paid the ultimate price for defending our country. We're grateful for this great nation, pray thy blessings upon it. We're grateful today to be gathered to discuss things that concern to a community and the city of Provo. Please bless all those involved with wisdom and inspiration and guidance to make those decisions that will be in the best interest of all the citizens here. We're grateful for the service all upon all these people and pray thy continued blessings upon them too. As we're about to eat, we also pray a blessing upon us, for there will be nourishment and strength unto us. Again, we thank thee for all our blessings, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Mr. Johnson. All right. So now we will turn the time over to Mr. Decker, Director of Public Works. And do we have an estimated time on this side?
About an hour.
Okay. About an hour.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Do we have any questions?
So this portion.
Just take some more sugar.
Yes, and we will transition over. Thank you.
We'll have to click down the hall so you can start with this. I appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation today. There is a little bit of confusion about the amount of time that we anticipate with this presentation. We actually think it will go much quicker than, I think there's two hours allocated total between it, and I don't think it will take two hours to cover the whole item. So we'll go fairly quickly through three main topics today that we wanted to cover with the Metropolitan Board and with the city council jointly so that there is some understanding about a fairly, in fact, I would call it a very significant concern that's coming to Provo City in the very near future. And before I get started too much and introduce the three main topics, I want to make sure that both the Metropolitan Board and the city council know the other staff members that are here with us. A lot of the presentation, a lot of the information that you'll hear today actually comes from those staff members, and it's key information. They've spent a lot of time. It's a very important topic, a lot of effort that we put in Public Works relative to water rights and protecting the water. So I think all of you know Gary Calder in the back. Ryan York is our sources manager. Jimmy McKnight is the business analyst and financial analyst. Shane Jones is one of our senior engineers that spends a significant amount of time on water rights. And then I also want to make sure that everybody knows John Mayby. John is our attorney that we have used for a long period of time, predates me by many, many years, as far as water rights in Provo City. And he'll play, John will play a pretty key role as we get into the conversation a little bit further. The three main topics that we wanted to cover with the Metropolitan Board and with the council today, I wanted to quickly review Aquifer Storage and Recovery, a presentation that was given last week to the city council. And we're only going to cover the first four, five, maybe six slides given to the council. If the Metropolitan Board is interested in seeing the rest of the presentation, I'm happy to do that in one of the upcoming board meetings. But for today's purposes, I think we get to the point fairly quickly in the first five or six slides of the presentation. At that point, I want to kind of deviate from the presentation and talk about how aquifer storage and recovery deals with a couple of other issues. So I want to review with this group an agreement that was, the city, the Metropolitan Board, and Central Utah Water came to in 1987. You can see my copy is pretty beat up, and we're going to give you copies of this agreement that was signed and adopted in 1987. Let's not do it quite yet. And then we're also going to, thanks Gary for being on it. And then we're also wanting to cover in some, at least some general nature, we want to cover the adjudication. And I mentioned this briefly to the city council last week, and I think it's important that both the city council and the Metropolitan Board understand the significance of the adjudication and how it impacts the conversation that we're having here, this agreement in 1987, and other water rights issues. So we're going to dive into it. Unless, there's a question?
Yeah, yeah. First off, I wanted to welcome the mayor who has joined us. But also, so we've got these three topics, and so is it our expectation that the third topic, we will go into a closed session before we begin to address that?
That's the most likely. That is, adjudication is considered litigation, and John will talk about it a little bit if you'd like in an open meeting, but that is considered litigation, and that was the concern that we raised with the council staff and with our legal department, where that is probably a reason justification for a closed meeting.
Okay. And you think with these three topics, including this portion that will be discussed in a closed session, all of that will fit in within the 120 minutes?
Yes. In fact, I think it'll be done faster than that, I hope.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
It'll depend on how much time John takes, so.
It'll depend on the question?
That will. So let me quickly review just a couple of slides that were given to the council last week relative to aquifer storage and recovery. And this is a topic that we have started talking about with a little bit more direction in Public Works over the last two years, probably. This slide and some of the other slides that you're going to see show, come from our master plan that was adopted, Water System Master Plan that was adopted in 2013, and shows growth potential or projections in Provo City in the coming years. And this is a similar graph with projections of water usage, and you can see the years along the top of the graph, and depending on whether we have conservation or if we do not meet conservation goals established by the state, what the water demands will be in acre-feet, by the way. This is in acre-feet for each of those years. Just so that there's a little bit of perspective, especially for the Metropolitan Board members I mentioned last week to the council, that currently the city utilizes about 28,000 acre-feet of water each year. So that puts that, I think, in a little bit different perspective. We'll come back and talk. You'll notice that the 2010 projections already are showing us exceeding that amount, and we'll talk, we'll show a graph here in just a second that, where the master plan and the modifications with the master plan are going. So this is a graph that the council has seen a number of times, and it comes from the 2013 master plan, and the projections that you saw in table form are now showing graphic form on this. This line right here, this blue line, is water projections with conservation in the city estimated by the consulting firm. Without conservation is the dash purple line that I'm showing that's shown on this graph. And so we just took the information that was, again, shown in the table form and just showed it in a graphic form now. And underlying these demands are the sources of water that the city has at its disposal. Most of them are large sources that are identified. There's generally a lot of water right information behind this. We're consolidating a lot of information in the graph here to make it a little bit easier to understand. But at the bottom of the graph, we show springs in South Fork and ApoVA Canyon and the water rights that the city owns from the springs. On top of that, this lighter blue color is Big Springs. It was a water right that was developed just recently. I think the city owned it for some time, but we had developed it just recently. And by the way, I think the Metropolitan Board participated in part of that project to develop that water, so that's an important step that moved there. The next block of water rights that are shown in the graph, the red one, is groundwater. And by the way, if you can read it over here, you can see these different colors are identified by how many acre-feet of water represented. So the groundwater rights, we're going to talk about quite a bit today. Between this red, this is a consolidated water right of groundwater, and then this purple one right here is the Umpa water right that was purchased relatively recent, I think it was in the 1990s if I'm not mistaken. It was the Umpa water right, and it's about 20, let me make sure I'm reading the right one here. The Umpa water right is about 6700 acre-feet. So the groundwater, those two are groundwater rights. Those two added together are about 30,000 acre-feet of water that's available by water right to the city. On top of that, the green is Provo City, or excuse me, Provo River water rights that the city has. And then there's some smaller water rights, Deer Creek and some other water rights that sit on top of that. This is a graph that I'm a little bit concerned about, and I spoke to the council last week. It may be a little bit misleading in that I sometimes get asked questions about, does the city have enough water, you know, going into the future to provide, you know, that future demand? And by the way, those future demands, well, let me back up before I go down here. So this yellow mark right here shows our actual, Provo City's actual water demand in each of those years. So you can see we're actually hitting well below the conservation goals that have been established by the state engineer's office. And in the modification that we're going through on the water master plan right now, we've actually asked the consulting engineers to make those corrections based on our current consumption. We're actually not consuming water as quickly as had it been originally anticipated in the 2013 master plan. So we're actually backing off those projections as far as how much water is going to be needed in the future based on our current demand. It's just not consistent with what the consultants have told us. However, given where this graph is maybe a little, if I can explain why I feel like the graph is a bit misleading, there is an underlying assumption in the graph that every single one of those water rights will be available without any question, without any interruption. And as the, by the way, this is the same graph, let me see, this one is a dry year. You can see up at the top, the one that I was showing before, this is an average year demand. You can see even in the 2013, if we were not meeting conservation goals, the consultant was telling us that we did not have an adequate amount of water rights during a dry year. However, that's being modified like I indicated in the master plan, it's being updated. So these are actually the modifications, and we can give you copies of these two pages if you'd like to see them in table form. So you can, if you recognize where the numbers were at before versus where they're projected to be right now, we've actually decreased the amount of water that we're projecting for the city in the future years. So in this table that I showed the council last week, again, this comes from the master plan. However, we've tried to categorize the water rights into four pretty broad categories. So springs are highlighted in the pink. In the green is our groundwater, and then two surface water rights are shown, the brown or tan are the Provo River rights that the city owns, and then surface storage up in Jordan L and Deer Creek. And the point that we tried to make with the council very quickly about groundwater, if you remember back on that table where about 30,000 acre-feet of water is shown on that graph, and again, the underlying assumption is that all of that water is available into the future. We showed two wells in the city, and going back, this one goes back to the static water level when it was drilled in January of 1977. And then you can see the data that the consultant, that we have working on aquifer storage and recovery, has put, and Ryan York was the one that actually provided this data, and this is static water level again, and one of our wells at 5,600 north, well, so this is very close to the north end of the city, right at the mouth of Provo Canyon. And then the consultant did a best-fit curve to that data, and you can see it jumps up and down, which is to be expected. The aquifer has a natural recharge process, and I described this at length, and I'm not going to do this very long today, but most of the groundwater from Provo City comes from, generally from the mountain, the mountain benches along the edge of the city. And so during very wet, heavy years, especially like this year, you're going to see more groundwater getting into those underlying layers where our wells are drilled, and then our wells are basically like straws that draw the water out for the city to consume. But as that water naturally is put into the aquifer, whether it's weather-related or whether it's the demand that the city's putting on based on those wells taking water out, you can see that the decline is fairly significant in that well, about 60 feet of decline since 1977. Now, that may not seem like too much, and I'm going to show you one other well here. This is the 88 well, so this sits about the middle of the city, about 800 north, 800 west, and same exact exercise, about 20 feet of decline since 1986 when it was originally drilled.
Hey Dave, excuse me.
Yes.
You went past that slide where all your water is available, two slides ago. Is that the water you're using right now, or the water that you're planting that's available to the city? So this one?
Is it this one?
Yes.
Did you add a question on?
Yeah.
So this was, this was the usable, so this is usable yield on an average year versus a dry year. So this is not representing our water rights, because you'll see the numbers on this table actually are different than the one that I showed you before. But this one is an estimate from the consulting engineer saying that he thinks this is the amount of water usable in each of those areas, each of those different categories. But you can see again, right here, he's assumed, he's made an assumption that about 30,000 acre-feet of water and groundwater is available. And the point that I'm trying to make is that given where our wells are going, the likelihood of having 30,000 acre-feet of water from groundwater available in the future is not going to happen.
Well, that 1800 acre-feet from CUP you haven't used at all.
That's right. And we'll talk about, we'll talk about a little bit of other water that's available. But I think the main point that we're trying to make with this information right here is that this graph, let me see if this will go back. This graph, and again, I'll just use the average year graph, but this graph is making an assumption that this entire, in fact, not just this one, but every single one of these water rights that are under this consumption line. And again, whether you draw the consumption line here or modify a consumption line that you'll see in the master plan, which will be a little bit lower, but it's making an assumption that all of this water is available for use underneath that line. And the point that I'm trying to make is this water right here is a little bit of a question mark. And the reason that I state that, there was a study that was conducted in North Utah County, and I'm happy to give copies or hand this out, but this was a study that was done in 2012. Hanson Allen Luce did this, and it raised some concern in North Utah County. So this is a study that was actually, went down to the boundary, the north side of the Provo River, so entire part of North Utah County down to the north edge of the Provo River. And it indicated that on an average, in North Utah County, the wells had dropped about 20 feet. It was not the only reason that the state engineer acted on this study, but there was, this study was one of the main reasons that the state engineer reversed or eliminated the ability for cities to exchange water from surface water to groundwater. So there used to be a longstanding practice where a city could take an irrigation share or a surface water right running in American Fork or Lehigh or someplace in the north end of Utah County, and they could take that water right and do a change application, take it to the state engineer, and they would exchange it for groundwater, so that the city could then use that water out of the ground, which is a higher quality, they don't have to treat it. There was a number of reasons that cities did this. But once this study came out, and again, I don't think it was the only reason the state engineer did this, but once that, this study kind of confirmed some suspicions, I think the state engineer eliminated that practice in North Utah County. So there's no longer the ability to exchange surface water to groundwater. And my concern, one of my primary concerns, is that kind of an action happening in Provo. And the conversation that we're having relative to ASR, it's not necessarily a new one. I'll show you a couple of studies. I showed this to the council last week, and I'm happy to hand it out again. This is a study that was done in 1978, talking about aquifer storage and recovery possibilities in Utah County. Please.
Sorry, just to clarify for me, that kind of an action meaning the state overriding what a city's doing? Is that what you meant when you're concerned about that kind of an action happening for Provo?
Or a similar action.
Okay.
Where groundwater might be restricted for some reason.
Where the state comes in.
Yep.
Okay.
So this study, and again, I'm happy to hand this out, done in 1978, talked about aquifer storage and recovery projects that were potential in Utah County. Provo City is specifically addressed in a couple of locations in this study, but it's not unique to Provo City by any means. It's really a county-wide discussion. And by the way, the cost estimates, I think it was George Stewart that pointed out, the cost estimates are badly out of date now on, in this study. But there were some cost estimates relative to aquifer storage and recovery. I've also found one other statement in here, near the beginning, that I found very interesting. They had been monitoring the groundwater when this was done, and they were seeing declines of about two to three feet in the aquifer. I found that very interesting, where in 1978 it's two to three feet, today's they were anywhere from 20 to 60 feet down. So it's clearly on the decline. So Cliff, do you want to hand those around? So I think, I think at this point, and I recognize, I apologize, I almost feel like I need to apologize to the Metropolitan Board members, because I'm going to kind of deviate, make a pretty quick turn here, and not really finish the conversation about aquifer storage and recovery. It really is an area where I feel like we need to make some headway in the city, and there's some possibilities of using some of our, you know, some of our other water to supplement or to shore up our groundwater supply. And it's one of the main, it's one of the main topics that we're going to cover today. But I want to, I want to cover one of the pieces, so I'm going to shift to topic number two here, and talk about the 1987 agreement. We refer to it, and Gary, if you want to pass out these copies, we refer to it internally in Public Works as the 1987 agreement. And there was, I need to give a little bit of history on this agreement. So there was a study done in, let me see if there's a date on this, 1983. This study here was done, and you'll, I think you'll probably find it interesting, even though it was done both for Provo City and for the Metropolitan Board, this study is actually addressed to the Metropolitan Board, and it directly goes back to the Metropolitan Board. And the study, or I don't even know if I'll call it a study, but there was some concerns at the time about the proposed Jordan L reservoir. If you remember, in the early 1980s, Central Utah Water had proposed Jordan L, and it went through a pretty long amount of approval process. In that, in that process, this study was done, and I'll hand out the study here in just a second. But there were two recommendations that came out, in fact, a couple of recommendations that came out. And relative to Jordan L reservoir, the city, and I believe based on the studies and the documentation that I've seen, the Metropolitan Board also felt very strongly that the reservoir should not be constructed. There was a pretty strong disagreement about water rights and if there were available water rights to fill another reservoir in the Provo River. And the city and the Metropolitan Board jointly entered into some litigation with Central Utah over the Jordan L reservoir. The settlement of that litigation is contained in this 1987 agreement. And there were several items that... And there were several items that, that came from the 1987 agreement. Does everybody have a copy of the agreement now? So let me just point out a couple of things, and you'll see that both the city and the Metropolitan Board are represented throughout the agreement. There are in the, in the initial clauses, in the whereas's, I guess I'll, I'll call them, there's several references to Provo City water rights by the Morris decree. So near the bottom of page one, it talks about the Morris decree water rights. But the, probably the key issue here that regarding water rights is the agreement starting on page two, and then also on page four. The parties agree, and page four is probably the clearest, if you want to turn over to page four, paragraph number three, near the bottom of page four. It's titled "No Future Contest." And it says, "Upon the completion of the general adjudication of water rights under the Anderson case, the parties heretofore will not seek," excuse me, "until the completion of the general adjudication of the water rights under the Anderson case, the parties heretofore will not seek to have a determination of the rights of the parties which are subject to this agreement litigation and determined ahead of the entry of the decree of the general adjudication suit." So if I can summarize that paragraph, and then also on page two, it talks about the same thing. Essentially, the parties agreed not to resolve the water right dispute. That the dispute that the city and the Metropolitan Board had with Central Utah at the time allowed Central Utah to use what they claimed as extra water and store in Jordanell Reservoir. And the city agreed, in exchange for that, the city agreed to receive 10,000 acre-feet of storage in Jordanell. And that's identified on page five, paragraph six. And they, and it talks about, and I'm not going to read the whole paragraph, but it talks about the city and the Metropolitan Board, and you'll note, this is how the storage in Jordanell was created. We've talked about this a number of times, but this agreement is, is the specifics about how the city and the board, the Metropolitan Board, received that storage. It's important to note for everybody, and I think I've explained this before, but I, but I'll note it again, the storage in Jordanell is just an empty box. There's no water there. And this agreement actually spells that out. It actually says on the next page that the obligation of the city to get water into that storage is completely on the city to get it there. And at the time, and still even today, really the only water right that we have that sits, that originates above Jordanell is a lot, is a water right called Lost Lake. It actually comes in two parts. On very good wet years, we get about 700 or 800 acre-feet of water, only 700 or 800 acre-feet of water. So with evaporation and other things that are happening in Jordanell, it would take more than 10 years of continually never using that water. It would take at least 10 years to fill that 10,000 acre-feet of storage in Jordanell with that only, that sole water right. In 2014, the city actually initiated that with Central Utah Water. We started storing the Lost Lake water right, and a combination of some other things have created about 3,000 acre-feet of storage by the end of this water year in Jordanell. Is that correct, Brian? So, and you can tell, so five years have passed, we've stored about 3,000 acre-feet of storage. It's going to take us a while to get that, that storage full. So, so I think the other main point, and I'll revert back again to the general adjudication, because this is really the introduction to the third topic. So the dispute over the water rights, and they were primarily Provo River water rights that were in dispute, the dispute was really not resolved, in my opinion. It was, they kind of said, okay, we'll resolve it until the general adjudication happens with the state engineer's office. And as I indicated to the council last week, we have been put on notice, and I think the Metropolitan Board has also received similar notices, that the state engineer intends to start the general adjudication in Utah County. And it is the time that this agreement and others have kind of said, the water rights are now going to be resolved. The general adjudication, again, I'm going to, I'm going to switch topics here, go to the third topic, and then we'll invite John to come up, and we'll talk about general items and whether we need to close the meeting or not. But the adjudication, in my opinion, is kind of an inventory, a time for the state engineer to conduct inventory throughout a watershed or a specific area in the state of Utah. They've done this in other areas. Salt Lake County was a couple of years ahead of us in the adjudication in Salt Lake County. But Utah County is now in line, and potential litigation, in fact, litigation, the adjudication is considered litigation. And, and the state engineer will take inventory of our use of water rights and potential changes if we don't have, well, good documentation indicating the future need of water rights. And I think it's very critical that we understand the significant nature of the adjudication and the impact, the potential impact that it has for the city. So with that, I think I'll let John come up and cover at least in general, and then we may, we may need to have a little bit of a break here and, and talk with Brian about whether there's specific questions that may need to be discussed in the closed meeting or not.
Is this your phone?
It is.
Thank you, Dave. As Dave introduced me, I'm John Mayby with the firm of Mayby Wright &amp; James. I've been practicing water law for about 35 years, 15 years of which with the state engineer's office, and I assisted them greatly in the general adjudication process. So I know the general adjudications inside and out, both from inside and out, just like I said, representing private clients and institutional clients like Provo Metro and Provo City. And I intend to, at this point, to just keep my comments very general. I think there are important processes and procedures you need to understand as to what's coming at, at you. You as, as property owners, or as water right owners, some of you may individually own water rights, as representing the city in an administration capacity, or as elected officials, you're going to need to understand basically what this process is, because the state engineer will be sending out notices to every single property owner within these adjudication areas, and people are going to have questions. You're going to have questions, what is this all about? So I hope to be able to address these, the general issues of the general adjudication, so you understand the procedures and, and what's going on. Like Dave said, the 1987 agreement referred to the adjudication. The reason adjudications are important is that going back in history, the only way you could get a water right defined and of record and understood was to go to the courts. And in 1921, the Fourth Judicial District Court of Utah issued the Morris decree. If you were in San Pete County or Sevier County, they'd call this Bacon's Bible. Some people call this the Blue Bible, but not, not too often do I hear that here. But this is a copy of the decree issued in 1921 that, that declared by judicial order what all the water rights are on the Provo River. And so these are, this is where, you know, Provo City and Provo Metro, to a certain extent, got decreed some of these old Provo River water rights. Some of these were acquired after the decree, some of them were recognized to be owned by the city in the decree. But now, we find ourselves with the state engineer having determined that now is the time to adjudicate or re-adjudicate the water rights on the Provo River system. The lawsuit to adjudicate the rights was commenced in 1936, and here we are, how many years later, you know, 80 years later, the legislature has finally set aside sufficient money, and the state engineer has determined it's time to re-adjudicate the rights. And so this will be a court proceeding where this will take place. And the end result is we'll have a new decree on the, on the Provo River system. So let me talk about the timelines. I had no idea how many people attended this meeting, so I only have 20 copies. I'll send some down this way and some down this way. Maybe we'll have to share, share copies. So on the, the first page shows a, a map of the adjudications affecting Provo, which I have highlighted, okay? The first one is the Orem, called the Orem subdivision, and that actually was started in 2014. And the eastern boundary of that subdivision is the Provo River. And so everything west and north of the Provo River is included in that Orem subdivision, which started in 2014. Now Metropolitan Board has a number of Provo River decreed rights that are in that subdivision. Provo City also has some water rights in that subdivision, some groundwater wells, and some other rights that might be there. So this is, this process has already started. And after they, for whatever reason, the state engineer started doing Orem, then he decided to go up to Salt Lake County. And so the past three, three to five years, he's been intensely adjudicating Salt Lake County. He's now completed that pretty much, and now he's moving back into Utah County. And so on the, on the bottom subdivision, it's the call Provo City South, he will begin adjudicating that this July. He will be sending out notices, and I'll, I'll show you an example of what I mean by this. And people will be given a 90-day deadline to file claims. And anyone owning a water right, you know, it's whether you own water from a spring, from a well, directly from a river source, you will be required, even though you think your rights are already of record, which they are, everyone will be required to fill out a water user claim and file it with the state engineer's office and reclaim your water rights all over again. Now, good for the city, you have your staff that does that. And Metro has people that helps them. I've been asked to help them on, on this process for their, for their adjudication. And so that's, that's important. And then you go up, then you see that the Provo City North subdivision begins in August. Then Provo Canyon subdivision begins in September. So there's going to be a high rate of activity going on, on the adjudications this summer in the Provo City area. Any questions about, about that? Okay, the next page is a, a very schematic summary of the process, and I've only highlighted one, two, three, four, five, five of these boxes. The first one is the summons. Now typically, and this is litigation, like David said, so what the state engineer will be doing is mailing out, like for example, on the Provo City South subdivision in July, he will be mailing out a summons to every single property owner within that boundary. Now some, a lot of people open up these summons, and they say, whoa, this must be pretty important. Some get scared, some call the news, some call the governor, some call the mayor. What is the state of Utah doing to my water rights? And, and so they put the summons out, gives them notice that we're starting to adjudicate this area, and tells them, if you have more questions, please come to a public meeting, and I'll, and the state engineer will be there to answer questions. So my experience has been in other areas that this will generate a lot of questions that some, you know, your constituents, cities, and, and in most, in most, well, I would say, this is where the state engineer is founded anyway, about only 5% of people that get these notices have to worry about it. Because if they get their public waters, if they get their water supply from Provo City, that's the only water supply they get, they don't own any other water, they don't own water rights, they have to participate in it. But for purposes of adjudicating and quieting title to all of the water within the drainage, they serve everybody in case you don't, they don't have a claim of record. For example, if you've got a spring on your property and it's been used since, you know, 19, early 1900s, you may never have filed a claim on it. And so what they're attempting to do is to make everyone that possibly has a claim file a claim in the adjudication, so those rights can be recognized. And, but by serving everyone, they're, you know, sending out a lot of these notices to people that don't need to worry about it. So any, any questions about this summons and service and all this? It will, like I said, it will go out, starting in July in the Provo South, and then August, Provo North, and then Provo Canyon in September.
So the idea is, assuming that all these rights are out there, but the state engineer has decided there's some questions about some of them. So they finished Salt Lake, you say, or will be?
Yeah.
What are they finding? Is it that big, is it that big a deal that they've?
Yeah, let me, let me, that's a good question, Dan. Mostly of what they're doing, or what the end results have been, is in some cases, there are hundreds, literally hundreds of water rights that have been abandoned, people didn't know they had a well on their property. And so one of the reasons the state engineer is doing this is to update their, their database, update the water right records, and get these abandoned water rights off the books. They also go in and, you know, look at all the historic irrigation companies, how much water are they currently using now compared to what they were decreed back in 1921? And in a lot of cases, those, the state engineer will find less water is being diverted, and they may reduce those water rights in the adjudication proceeding. So that, that is what's happening in that regard. And so when you're dealing with old decrees, like the Provo River Morris decree, or other decrees on different drainage systems, those old decrees weren't very specific, weren't very definitive. And so as they go through the adjudication this time, they will, they will assign a priority date. A lot of the rights in the Provo River decree don't have priority dates. They're done by classes, 17 classes of water rights. And so that could have some impact on the way water's distributed, you know, depending on what your priority date is. The state engineer intends to, as much as possible, not disrupt things as the adjudication goes forward and allow, you know, for water to be distributed as it has been.
Yes. Now, if we're looking at current uses, are we able to have, even though we're not using, we expect growth.
Right.
And so are we able to store that? Are they recognizing that in this adjudication process? That growth is happening or potential growth is there? So we need to reserve those rights and not lose those.
Yes, that's an excellent question. Because Provo City and Provo Metro are considered to be what's called public water suppliers. And in 2008, the legislature, after some contentious litigation and concerns that were raised, the legislature declared that water rights owned by a public water supplier like cities, as of May 5, 2008, those rights are protected from forfeiture. They are not subject to forfeiture for that very purpose. That was the debate on the floors of the legislature, was, you know, these cities have acquired these water rights to meet their future demands, meet future growth. They should not have their water rights, you know, cut off or, excuse me, reduced to what their existing current use is because cities need that for the future, their future growth. And so in this adjudication process, the state engineer has generously recognized in other areas of the state that water rights owned by cities and districts, et cetera, owned, you know, as of 2008, those rights will be protected.
Now, if a farmer has water rights, he has to give them to the city to maintain those rights individually on the west side of Provo, for example. If he says, I've got my rights, he is not a water supplier, but he does someday potentially want to develop that property.
Yeah, that has created some inequities. It's not, you know, we have the public water supplier rights being protested, but we don't have anyone else, like commercial business, industries, agriculture, water. That's not being protected. They are still subject to the rules of forfeiture. And so there are other things they can do to protect their rights, but I don't want to go into that right now. But that's a good question.
So when they get that letter, they still better contact somebody, is what you're saying? Somebody calls and says, we've got this letter and I have these rights.
Yes.
They better be on top of that.
Right. And the Division of Water Rights has hired a lot of staff to do nothing but answer questions of the public. And so in that notice, there'll be a phone number they can call and talk to and get that kind of questions answered. So it'll lessen the burden on city personnel and otherwise. So I think I've covered pretty much what I want, but I would like to make some recommendations on what I think the city and those in the adjudication should do. And that is that you have to actively participate. You have to be aware of all these deadlines as notices come in. We need to note that, that we have so many days to file our claims, et cetera. And do those timely or get extensions. You can get extensions if you need that. We need to protect and defend our rights through this process. We need to assert and claim that which we are entitled to. And then, once the state engineer has taken all these claims, he will publish a proposed determination, which will be his recommendation on all the water rights. It will be served on every water user. And every water user will then have 90 days to review the proposed determinations and decide if they agree with all the rights that are in there, not only their own rights, but if there are other critical rights that may impact them. That, and if you disagree with the way those rights are defined, then you should file an objection to, you know, get those things, get those issues identified. And so you can go about resolving them by settlement or by litigation in court if necessary. But that's the process we're in. And Provo City has been actively adjudicating and asserting claims, as well as Metro. The Orem book will be published soon, probably end of the year, first part of the year. And so, you know, I just say that because the process is just going to continue to march on through. So that kind of ends my general explanation of the adjudication. I will be, you know, there will be time to talk specifically about water rights at different times, rather than in this open session. And for example, I'll be meeting with the Provo Metropolitan Board. And we'll go through, you know, things like that. So the council could do the same thing on their water rights. Does anyone have questions about the adjudication process? What, yes?
So if I understood correctly, it's been 100 years or so since this process is?
Yeah, this ended in 1921, this decree. And then Salt Lake City thought, well, they didn't have their rights adjudicated, okay? And so in 1936, Salt Lake City wanted to have all the water rights on the Jordan River adjudicated. And the state engineer then decided, okay, if we're going to the extent of adjudicating all the rights in Utah Lake and the Jordan River, all of these other rights, like on the Provo, could be impacted. So in 1936, the court issued a general adjudication order for all of the Utah Lake and Jordan River drainage, which goes all the way up to Provo, Spanish Fork, et cetera. And so since 1936, that adjudication has pretty much been languishing. They've done a few areas from time to time. But now this, you know, now it's being pushed heavily. And so we get to do it every 100 years, 1921, it's 2000, almost, no. It's our turn, like it or not, it's our turn. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
The drainage that they're looking at, Strawberry's not involved, that's south.
That's on the other side of the drainage. Because Strawberry drains into the Duchene River.
Right, so the only water that we're really looking at is the Provo coming out of the canyon, Jordan L., Deer Creek.
And all the tributaries to Utah Lake.
All the tributaries to Utah Lake. And Strawberry, it does not go to Utah Lake.
Well, it's, you know, there's the Strawberry Valley Project and then the Central Utah Project use Strawberry Reservoir. And they divert that through Diamond Fork Canyon and dump it into Spanish Fork River, which then makes its way to Utah Lake. But those rights, because they originate in the Duchene River system, will be adjudicated there and not part of the Utah Lake adjudication. Anything else, Dave?
Any other questions? I think with that, I'd recommend that we schedule, you know, some specific times where we can come back and talk about, you know, some specific concerns on water rights with the council. And it would probably be more appropriate in a closed session and how Metropolitan Board handles their specific water rights. I'll leave it up to Dan and the rest of the board to decide that. But I think, I think based on what we've presented today, I think there's a good understanding about, you know, some of the challenges that we're going to face in the next couple of months, so.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. So it sounds like we don't need to go into a closed session. Oh, yes, please.
Dave, is it possible to get your slides?
Absolutely.
Can you invite email or something if you have it?
We can send them out. And like indicated, if the board and Dan, if there's a desire to see the rest of the presentation on awkward storage recovery and, you know, the concerns there, it would probably be appropriate for the board to see the rest of that presentation as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Just curiosity, a little different topic, but where are we at as far as storage? And are we, with the amount of water we've had right now over the last little while, are we, I just love hearing percentages, I'm going up. Where are we at?
Ryan probably is the best one. Yeah, I could throw a few numbers at you. If you remember back a couple of weeks, we had 80-degree temperatures for about three days in a row. We ended up starting three wells because of the demand on the system went from 18 million gallons per day up to 30 million gallons per day in that three-day period. Since then, we've had quite a bit of rain, cooler temperatures. Everyone decided maybe we don't need to sprinkle our lawn. We're back down below that 18 million gallons where we started. All the wells are off. We've got more spring water than we know what to do with, so we're in really good shape right now.
Ryan, can you give in storage in Jordan L. and Deer Creek, how full those reservoirs are?
Deer Creek is completely filled.
Two with 10 foot and a half.
Yeah, they're increasing the flow release out of that reservoir in anticipation of the higher level snow continuing to come down. Jordan L. is, I think they've got more room, looking for runoff to come and fill that the rest of the way. But we're going to have extremely high flows in the Provo River again this year.
I remember last year, we kind of, maybe it was a couple of years ago, but we really let that water come out.
Two years.
Two years ago, yeah. And I think we, I hate to say that, we lost someone in there. We don't want to, we want to make sure that, I'm starting to hear a few opportunities to hear people talking about the danger of runoff.
Yeah, so the last report that I got in Jordan L., they were about 85 or 86% full. I mean, it's really, it's really quite full. They do have some emergency storage in Jordan L. for flood control. But Richard Snyder, who is keeping in contact with the Provo River Water Users Association, which does a large, they're not the only agency, but they have a large control on the release from Deer Creek. They've indicated that we're up to 1,000 CFS. So just first since perspective, two years ago when we had really high flows, we were in the 1,800 to 2,000 cubic feet per second in the river. So we're already up to 1,000 cubic feet per second in the river. And we've seen, and I visited with Keith, is it Denas from Provo River? I visited with him and said, hey, the city would really appreciate not only the communication, but a little longer release, you know, earlier release to prevent these really high flows that come when the temperatures turn warm. I think they've done a little bit more this year. We've seen several steps that they've increased the flow out of Deer Creek to try to relieve, you know, harsh waters in those reservoirs. But Richard is feeling like we're going to see, very similar to what Ryan said, we're going to see flows very much like we saw two years ago, the 1,800 plus cubic feet per second in the river. Because the real high melt has not really started.
Wasn't there a newspaper article that came out, basically stay away from the river during the weekend? Stay away from the water? Maybe similar warnings?
So David, I guess I'm a little bit confused. If you planned or thought about going into a closed session, but we don't need to now, what's changed? Is there something going on that we ought to be aware of?
So I think there's, for both the Metropolitan and the city, there's specific concerns about some of the water rights that need to be discussed. And, you know, given the conversation that I've had with John, with some of the legal people, it's probably more prudent to have that individually done. So the Metropolitan Board listens specifically to the water rights that they own and control. There are, I think it's important to note that there are water rights. There's kind of three categories of water rights in Provo City. So there's some that are owned and controlled solely by the Metropolitan Board. There's some that are controlled solely by Provo City. And then there's some that are jointly owned. And so how those are handled in the adjudication and what are the claims? So John mentioned, you know, filing a claim with the state engineer. Once you are summoned, once you receive that summon, we have to file a claim. And there's information that has to be put relative to that water right, how it's being used or how it will be used in the future. And there's some very specific information that probably needs to be discussed again with both bodies.
In a closed session, like?
I would, I am certainly going to recommend that for the city. And again, how the Metropolitan Board, I'm just a member of the board.
It would seem like we would all need to know about all three of those rights in order to be a team, help each other.
And I think at some point, that may need to come back together and have that conversation in a joint. And again, that's partly, I may have jumped the gun a bit in asking for a closed session to talk about all of the water rights together. But I think, I think once they are talked about in a separate session, we may need to come back together and make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Any other discussion? Well, unless there are objections, we will declare ourselves adjourned by unanimous consensus.